Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's 9:00 AM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February the 11th, 2025. It's 9:00 AM, and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. This is a regular held meeting of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas. And today, we are very pleased to have with us Pastor Paul Duncan of the Mambreno Baptist Church to give us the invocation. Pastor?
That's great. God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we come to you grateful, grateful for this state that we live in, this county that we live in. It's a blessing, and there's much for us to give thanks for. We thank you, God, for the rain. We thank you for the way that you provide for us and look after us. The sun to rise and the rain to fall is a gift, and we're grateful. God, pray for the work that's being done today here. I pray that good work would be done. We ask that you would give wisdom. There are many concerns about good things in the county that need to be taken care of today, and there are many concerns about bad things that are happening in the county that need to be taken care of today. So we pray for that, for that insight. God, I pray for each of these commissioners, pray for the judge, that they would interact with one another and with the citizens with humility. And God help them to ask for help when they need that help, help them to help each other. We pray that in these discussions and in these debates, that there would be passion and that there would be conviction and that there would be a struggle, that the result would be unity and good and blessing, that the businesses here and the citizens, the families, the property owners would be able to do good. So God, be with them, help them, direct them, keep them from error. And God, we pray for your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the first item of business, thank you very much, Pastor. The first item of business then is a special proclamation honoring three Hood County citizens for their assistance with a burglary investigation. Are these three citizens here?
Just one.
Just one?
Hi, how are you? It's nice to meet you.
So, do you want to make up?
Tell the court what this lady has done.
So, let me explain.
I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the backbone of every effective law enforcement agency is a strong partnership with their community, whereas in November 2024, several Hood County citizens, through their own resourcefulness, scoured through online marketplace posts and other social media sources for an item stolen in a recent burglary. And whereas the relevant information they gathered about the identity and location of the sellers later led to the positive identification and charging of the suspect, along with return of the item stolen in the burglary. Whereas law enforcement routinely depends on the help from the public to assist in solving crime and making the community a safer place for everyone. I just want to say that, you know, so many times, property crimes especially, aren't solved because they're hard to solve. And so we really rely on the public to step up and help us. In this situation, the public of their own accord stepped up without even being asked and assisted in bringing this burglary to a successful conclusion, and I want to thank them for it.
So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court, along with the Hood County Constable's Office in Precinct 2, does hereby recognize and honor Jennifer Norgad, Dawn France Witzak, and Brooke Jandak for their alliance and assistance to law enforcement in solving the burglary investigation. So this was a felony burglary that was helped to be solved by three engaged citizens that wanted to help there. All right. Is this Jennifer?
I'm not 100% sure.
All right. All right, so we're just reading your names. So Hood County, Hood County Constable's Office, Precinct, does hereby recognize and honor Jennifer Norgad, Dawn France Witzak, and Brooke Jandak for their alliance and assistance to law enforcement in solving the burglary investigation. So Constable Shirley just described the help that you both, along with your third associate, helped solve this felony investigation, and we really appreciate the work that the citizens have done to help with solve this crime. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We need, we gotta get pictures. Thank you, Constable.
Melissa, there are no service awards today.
Yes.
So the next item agenda is citizens' comments at large, and we only have one person that has signed up to give a public participation form. But remember that if you want to speak, you've got to fill out a public participation form, hand it to Sheriff Deeds. Sheriff Deeds will hand it to Christine Leffwitch, our county clerk, and she will get you in line up here to give it to me, and I will call you as you sign up. So the first speaker is Dave Eagle.
When we take the oath of office, we raise our right hand and swear on the Bible that we will preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and of this state. This oath, when we take that, presupposes we have an inkling of what the Constitution means. Otherwise, it is an empty oath full of empty promises. What is a presiding officer? According to Robert's Rules of Order, a presiding officer is the one who has the duty to preside over a meeting, conduct said meeting in a fair and balanced manner, treating all involved in said meeting fairly and equally. The main job for the presiding officer is to move the meeting along, get through the agenda efficiently, and get business conducted in a timely manner. The main attribute for a presiding officer is to do all the above, handling all participants and items with an even hand. Public forum, open mic, what I'm doing right now, under the Constitution, a member of the public who signs up to speak is entitled to be treated with an even hand, to ensure he has the opportunity to express his or her opinion. Under the rules of decorum, there are some limitations. How long you can speak, not to get personal, not to demean folks, et cetera. The bottom line is that each person in each issue should get equal treatment and not be a double standard. I'm going to take you down memory lane. April the 14th, 2020, you may recall this was the beginning of the COVID fiasco. By this time, governors all over the U.S. were issuing orders to shut businesses down, make people stay home, wear masks, get injections, et cetera. Many of these orders, including the ones issued by Governor Abbott at the time, had serious constitutional implications. These executive orders issued by the governor were handed down to local county judges to be carried out. This judge and the majority of the court at that time was all about carrying it out. This commissioner, me, questioned the constitutionality of those executive orders. I took the position that the governor's executive order to shut people down and shut people up violated the Texas Constitution and the U.S. Constitution. This judge admitted in open court that he was not equipped and qualified to determine a constitutional issue, even though another member of this court, me, asserted the constitutionality of the governor's executive orders invited serious constitutional scrutiny. My views on the subject were silenced by this judge and his crew up there at the time. My attempts to bring sanity to the COVID situation were all voted down. Numerous businesses were shut down, numerous businesses were lost, numerous lives were shattered. One of the judges sitting up there at the time, Precinct Number 2 Commissioner, was allowed to keep his little golf course. He put that on the agenda, actually. His little golf course, his pro shop, and his restaurant were interestingly allowed to stay open. However, my little restaurant and other businesses all over this county were forced to shut down. That's a double standard if I ever heard one. So what is situational justice? Situational justice is where one buddy gets to stay open when he wants to and say what he wants, while the other one's, not a buddy, has to close his business down. What is viewpoint discrimination? Viewpoint discrimination happens when the government allows this opinion to be heard and that opinion to be silenced. Case in point, me versus the judge and his buddies. Perfectly fine for citizens to come up here and roast me down, call me names, call me a liar, and everything else, but if you look at this judge wrong, you're going to get shut out and thrown out of here by the sheriff. Steve Biggers case. Mr. Steve Biggers came up here and tried to play a recording that he had got from a hot mic. He also wanted to speak to some issues, and he was shut down before he ever got a chance to speak. He sued the judge because he was thrown out for viewpoint discrimination, which is a First Amendment issue. Sued the judge, the trial court threw the case out and dismissed it under the qualified immunity doctrine. Friday, the Fifth Circuit, because this case was appealed to the Fifth Circuit, the Fifth Circuit reversed and rendered that case. What that means is that the judge doesn't get qualified immunity, and this case is going to go to trial now. So based on viewpoint discrimination. So I'll close with this. This county had to pay its carrier a deductible to defend this case, and the question I've got now is who's going to pay for it now? Thank you, Court.
Okay, is that all that says tonight? Okay. Now, the first item of business is to discuss and take appropriate action to call for a bond election for a new jail building on May the 3rd, 2025 ballot. And we have with us today Mr. Jim Sabonis from Hilltop Securities to explain this to us. Mr. Sabonis.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, citizens of Hood County. My name's Jim Sabonis. I'm the financial advisor to the county. I work with Hilltop Securities. Over the last few months, we've been working with a number of commissioners and the staff, the finance staff, to analyze different options to fund some improvements for the county. I forwarded by email, and I believe it was forwarded to you, a copy of some analysis I did, and I'm going to walk through that analysis. And when I talk about the bond election, also, I think it's important to note, for background, the overall financial condition and the status of the county as a whole. I think before you talk about funding bonds, you have to understand where you are. And in summary, the county is in the strongest financial condition it's been. The last rating we had was a double A plus. My expectation, if we went forward and issued bonds, we'd be confirmed and maybe even upgraded, but we are a very high credit quality. Secondly, and this is important to note, is that we have very little debt outstanding. We haven't funded any debt in a while, and in fact, next year is the last year we actually have any principal payments due. And that's an important factor because it manages our tax rate. So what I'm going to start by saying is that I've been asked to size a $21 million bond program. And so the next election date, Saturday, May 3rd, final day to actually call the election, would be February 14th. We would actually have an election for limited tax permanent improvement bonds, which is the authority to fund anything that a county can legally fund debt for. It would involve a pledge or a levy of our INS tax. As I indicated, we're a very high investment grade. The timing I use for this analysis would be that we would probably issue sometime late in your fiscal year and close before the end of the fiscal year. So we have the funds to construct, and we'd actually be able to put that on our books before the end of the year. The plan would be issue $21 million of bonds to structure them as a premium, so that our premium would pay the cost of issuance, and the day of closing, $21 million would be funded into the county's construction. We've run different scenarios. I'm going to present a 20-year scenario right now. 20-year scenario allows for future funding of capital items. Right now, when I look at the interest rates, if we had been in the market, we would have been about 375 or 380. For our analysis, we used a 410 interest rate, tried to put a buffer there with what takes place. The total P&amp;I of that $20 million issue would be about $30.4 million over 20 years, an average of about $1.5 million. Our current INS tax rate is 2.55 cents. After the issuance of this debt, we would have, we structured, we'd have just one year at the same tax rate of 2.55, and then it actually would fall to 1.3 cents. And I ask you to turn to page three of the analysis here. This is a very conservative analysis. Currently, our value is 12.1 billion. We grew about 3.3%, which was the slowest growth we've had in a while. Last year, we only show one year of growth, and it's only 3/4 of 1% to 12.2 billion. We have our existing debt outstanding. It's only $2,600,000 for next year. We add our new debt that we've issued, and we'd actually levy the same INS tax rate that we have this year. And then after that, all our old debt would be paid off, and our new debt would only have an amortization of about $1.6 million. And our current value, it would have about a 1.3 cent rate. And the reason we structured it that way is that counties might have ongoing needs, and so as you move into the following year, if there's something follow-up that you needed to do, you would have the tax capacity without raising your INS tax rate. It's poor in this one year, and I've talked to the court about this previously, but we're at 2.55, and we've consistently gone down in our tax rate as we haven't issued new debt and we've actually grown our assessed value. If we don't issue debt this year, based on this analysis, we'll go from 2.55 to about 2 cents on our INS tax rate, and the following year, we have no INS tax rate. And so one thing to keep in mind is if you do have long-term capital goals, the thought would be to have, manage a consistent INS tax rate, whatever that would be. So in summary, this county is very high credit quality. It's run efficiently by every metric. It would be evaluated as a very high credit quality. Interest rates are reasonably low at the moment. We have tremendous capacity. I sized a $20 million bond issue, which would have no impact on our INS tax rate and actually leave us for a tremendous amount of capacity in the future. And your initial analysis shows that if we wanted to today, we could issue somewhere $60 to $70 million without any growth assumptions and still not having an impact on our tax rate. So as your financial advisor, from a financial perspective, this would be easily absorbable within our current financial structure. That concludes my comments. I'll answer any questions or provide any additional information I can.
Let me ask you this. So you're saying that... So you're saying that since we're paying off our debt, that Hood County needs to incur some indebtedness?
Well, I wouldn't use the word "needs." I think it's, the concept is, and for those in the public can see this, if we pay off our debt, we have no, we don't have ability to do an INS tax levy. So if you fund something, it would cause a tax increase. And generally, in my career, people think that it's better to maintain, to understand what your multi-year capital improvement program is and to find an equilibrium tax rate that funds it, so you don't go down and up, you know, to be consistent in your tax rate, with the thought that if we go to, we go forward one more year and we don't issue debt, just to make you aware of it, not saying that you're elected to make policy and decide what's best for this county, but if we go forward another year and we pay that debt off, anytime now we issue debt, it's going to be a tax rate increase on the INS side.
Okay. And this bond rate of the two scenarios that you present would not have any type of increase on the current rate of 2.55 cents? Is that correct?
Correct.
So to fund these bonds would not increase the tax rate at all, correct?
Correct. And as the schedule that's being shown, indicated, it would only be one more year at the same tax rate, then we'd drop from there, either drop down or go forward. Now, so again, it have no impact. It's actually a minimum amount of debt for this county to do.
Okay. Let me tell you one other thing. When we were talking with you last Monday, I guess it was, last Monday, and we had Mr. Segura, who's the attorney for you, he made an instant statement, I think you put it in writing also, that if we don't put the bond on the ballot in May, you risk the legislature adopting a pending bill, which would prohibit the county from calling another bond election for a failed bond measure for a period of five years. Would you explain that to me?
Yes, and unfortunately, he's not here, and I'm not a lawyer, but I will translate what my knowledge of that status is, that the current state law is that if we have a bond election and it fails, we can't issue long-term INS debt certificates obligation for three years. And there is submitted legislation that is generally thought that will be approved, which would extend that to five years and would indicate that, depending on which version of the legislation is approved, that the one says that you can't issue any other type of debt for five years to fund that project, and one has proposed to say that you can't even have a bond election for another five years. So there are a number of bills being submitted that are going to be limiting the use of debt or limiting how you vote bonds to from that process. So to answer your question, yes, that his thought would be that that bill would be pending going forward, and so the thought would be that going forward, having an election would be even more difficult if it fails from that process.
Okay. So that, you know, there was some talk that maybe it'd be better to do it in November because there's usually more people voting in a November election, and I agree with that. But because of this pending legislation, that could prevent us from having a bond election this November. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And so your legal department, and what you're all saying, is that right now, we can do a bond for the $21 million without increasing the tax rate, and that you really need some more debt in order to keep your double A plus tax rating, and you're taking a preventive measure that if you don't do it and put it on the ballot in May, you may not be able to put it on the ballot come November. Am I right?
Yeah, and again, that's, I want to be clear, that the various legislation that's passed has different levels of restrictions on how you can have bond elections. The ultimate restriction is that someone would look at new legislation that says, if there's been a failed bond election, you can't have another one for five years. November, move forward five years, and you couldn't fund something for that process. That's a concern. Now, there's different levels of being proposed. No one knows what will end up taking place, but that's one scenario we have. And I want to be clear that I don't think we would lose our double A plus rating. My thought is that, from a tax rate management perspective, and we've talked about this over the years, as we run out of debt, as we fund new things, now we get in a situation where instead of saying there's no tax rate increase, or even your tax rate will go down after we fund it, once we have no tax rate, it's going to be an increase in taxes.
One, a couple things. One, I don't think we have to worry about looking for other debt because we just adopted a master thoroughfare plan, and one of the priorities of this county is to increase mobility. So we know that going forward, we will incur some debt to help fund, along with other avenues of grants, to put that master thoroughfare plan into fruition. So I don't think we have to worry that we don't have any other capital needs. The capital needs are there. And the question on the legislation, is it, I guess, normal practice to go retroactive? Or would this bill be, from the point of the legislation being passed, which would either be effective as soon as the legislature's over or September 1st, any bond that's put on after this bill is enacted would then be subject to the bill?
To answer your question, that is based on how the bill's written itself and executed by our governor. And again, do they want it to be retroactive or do they want it to be forward-looking? According to Rudy Skurier, Bond Counsel, his thought is that it would be retroactive. I mean, it's the general move of legislation to restrict county and cities and other governmental entities from issuing debts, so they most likely would make it retroactive.
So the steps are either, because currently, as you mentioned, you can't issue certificates of obligation after a bond measure has failed. Tax notes would be added to that. That would be step one.
I think tax notes give some insight to where the state is headed, and technically, and I presented materials to this county about funding some things through a tax note, which we've done before. Tax notes are a seven-year obligation pledging our INS. And historically, when there's been a necessity fund a project, even if you had a failed bond election, you could do some effort towards the project by doing a tax note. It was allowed. I've done it many times in my career. But according to Bond Counsel, while that still is the statute and the law we work under, he recently was involved in a process where election failed, and they submitted a tax note to fund a portion of election, and he said that the Attorney General's Minnesota Bond Department scrutinized and fought, and he thinks that there's a high likelihood, especially given the pending legislation, that they would administratively try to defeat that process. And I think he's indicated on the phone, when we've been on the phone with him, that he couldn't guarantee that we could get a tax note done, even though by state statute we should. It would be difficult to get approved if we could get it approved.
Mr. Sabonis? Are you through for a minute?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were asking him. Yes, I'm finished.
No, he's not through. So do you have a specific bill? Is that a House bill or is it a Senate bill?
I can't reference them, but I'll contact Rudy, and I'll actually have him reference the numbers and send you the examples of them.
Okay, well, I've done quite a bit of research.
Okay, well, I've done quite a bit of research in the bills that have been introduced, and I'm going to give you a specific bill. It's a House Bill 2207, and I think it's, I think a five-year moratorium on a bond will not go. That's my opinion, but I'm going to read this one to you. It's a limitation on the authority to propose issuance of a general obligation bond. We're talking about a general obligation bond, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to read it. The change that they want to put into the Government Code 1253. A political subdivision may not submit a proposition to approve the issuance of a general obligation bond to the voters if the political subdivision submitted a proposition to approve the issuance of such bonds to the voters for the same purpose within the preceding two years, and the voters failed to approve that proposition. So last November, we had a $50 million proposition for a jail addition and everything else that went with it, some law enforcement offices, et cetera, and it failed. So that failure on November 5th started the clock ticking on that two years, correct?
Are you talking about existing legislation?
No, I'm just talking about, that was the day that that bond failed. That would start the clock ticking. So let me read Section 2 that exists in 1253. The change in law made by this act applies only to proposition submitted to the voters for which the election was ordered, not called, not the day of the election, but for which the election was ordered, owner after the effective date. What's the effective date? September the 1st. Now, I have not seen a five-year statute, I mean, a five-year proposal. This two-year proposal comports, in my opinion, is more passable and more doable, and I think it's got a good shot of going through, because with a certificate of obligation, you have a three-year moratorium factored into that, correct?
Correct.
If you, if you have a bond failure, you can't come back with certificates of obligation to go around the voters, which is what that is. You know, we don't like what y'all said, so we're going to go around you. You can't do that for three years. And as Mr. Sabonis said, tax notes, which is what we've done for fire equipment, we're going to, we're getting, we'll be paying that off next year, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so we need to go borrow some money. Well, as Commissioner Samuelson said, we've got roads, we've got, I just got an email this morning from our EMS director that they're in dire straits. Do you want ambulance services? Do you want your roads fixed? What do you want to do? But the bottom line is, I have not seen any five-year legislation that has a chance, in my opinion, of getting through. This two-year might, but if it does, it won't affect the November election, because we order the election before September the 1st. Is that true?
August 18th.
Yeah, I defer to your reading of it, and I'll have to check with Rudy and to get back to you. And I'll also check with Rudy to provide the background on the five-year.
Well, tell him it is House Bill 2207. It was introduced by Representative Bumgarner, and check that one out, because once again, I don't think it shuts us off for November. Do you agree with that?
That answers the question I was asking, is, is it in legislation, which you, thank you, Commissioner Eagle, for clarifying that, it's September 1st of 2025, which is the normal time that legislation that's passed during a legislative session becomes effective. So that's the way I was thinking that it would go, and so I'm glad he clarified that. Thank you.
Let me add something else. In order to get any kind of ballot, your name on the ballot to run for office, or a bond measure, whatever, it, there's, is it 72 days, or, there's a number of days before the election that it has to be to the Secretary of State, and September 1st is past that. So it will, if we decide to go with a November bond issue on this issue, we can, even if they pass this legislation, we can do it. We got time to let all the citizens say, okay, do you want a road? Do you want a jail? You know, which way do you want to go, or do we figure out something in between? But we just got this, this new proposal Friday morning, and once again, they're trying to rush into something and say, oh, we got to get it done by Friday. Or actually, we got to vote on it today, today.
August 18th.
I got more, but I'll shut up for now.
August 18th is the last day to call an election for November.
I got some speakers. We've got one more. All right, thank you, Judge. All right, the first speaker is Tom McElroy.
Hi, my name's Thomas McElroy, and I'm at 2200 Gene Court, which is Kevin's stomping grounds up there. And I've addressed this court previously, but I don't show up very often to discuss anything, because it needs to kind of hit me that the county needs a little help on some issues, so here I am. This county, being a relatively small county in the state of Texas, is really a great place to live. It's the first time I've lived in a real small town in a small county since I was a little kid in Arizona. And it's kind of fun to get to come and do this, although I could have done it in Tarrant County, but it seemed sort of pointless. Anyway, this jail situation seems to be a really good business opportunity for the people of Hood County, not only for our safety, but also for the county to have an opportunity to make some money instead of just spending money all the time. And when you look at figures like a million and a half dollars spent last year housing prisoners in other county facilities, that's a pretty good chunk of change, especially when you're just looking at 21-something million to build a whole new facility. Now, I realize the operating costs go up, but if you're not having to farm your people out, and you can take more inmates in and charge as much as we're getting charged or more, it looks to me like a no way, or a no way to lose situation. I've had a lot of board of directors tell me no about things, and then I did it anyway, and we made a lot of money, and then I was a hero. It doesn't always work that way, and nothing's cast in stone when you start off on it. There's always a gray area, or a gamble, a bit of a gamble, but if we keep doing what we're doing, for instance, 170,000 miles were put on county vehicles transferring prisoners out of county, with a cost of like $466,000. Well, not only is that a big expenditure and a lot of wear and tear on vehicles, but it's a lot of exposure for our deputies that do this sort of thing, to get hit by a train or whatever. And not only the deputies, but also the prisoners are at risk more. So in my humble opinion, let's take a little gamble on this thing, see if the county can make money instead of spending money housing prisoners everywhere. And I guess if the Sheriff's Department and the PD weren't so efficient, we wouldn't have this problem. So thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Greg Harold.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this important issue for Hood County. When I arrived at the meeting, the workshop meeting last Friday morning for, to discuss this very issue, Judge, you asked me to kind of listen to the proposal and reserve judgment, and so I, pardon me, I listened very, very carefully, and I have to tell you that I was extremely encouraged by what I heard last Friday morning. I think the proposal that was presented at, whether it was 827 or whatever it was, was, from my perspective, at least initially, pretty, pretty acceptable. Having said that, my concern here is that, as was stated earlier, that we are rushing into a situation where we should instead take the time to educate the public about what the proposal looks like, and make sure that we, as a Hood County community, are all on the same page. Judge, you and I are philosophically agreed. You said earlier that a bond election should be conducted in November. That's your philosophy. I agree with that. And so what I am asking for is that we, we consider, that we know that we have to do something with the jail, we consider delaying this election to the November ballot, so that the voters have a much greater period of time to evaluate your new proposal, and also so that we have a greater exposure to more voters to allow them to make a better decision on this important issue. Mr. Sabonis got up here, and he speculated in regards to what will happen with legislation that is being considered down in Austin in the 89th session. And I have to tell you that that is pure speculation. Commissioner Eagle, you pointed out correctly that even if that legislation is passed, that this measure can still be on the bond, or on the ballot for November. But I want to address the whole speculation issue. I mean, if we're going to speculate about what legislation will pass in Austin, let's go all the way, and let's speculate about interest rates between now and November. You know, we speculate that the interest rate, the actual effective interest rate would be 4.1%. President Trump is now in office. The last time he was in office, interest rates dropped dramatically. So let's speculate that the interest rate on any bond issue that is passed will drop. That's advantageous to us, and it would be advantageous in that case to wait. So what I'm asking for this court to do this morning is simply to delay the election until we can place that on the, on the ballot in November. I think it'll be much better positioned, and in the interim, all of us can work together to make sure that we educate the voters, so that we get a good decision that can be supported, and will help bring unity to our community. Thank you.
Mr. McCarroll? I totally right. I agree with everything that you just said, and I said that. What I'm saying here is that nobody can guarantee what this legislature is going to do. And it is a risk, like he said, it's a risk that the legislature can pass a bill that will prevent a bond being put on for an election in November. Nobody can sit up here right now and says, can tell me that that absolutely is not going to happen.
I can't tell you that it's absolutely not going to happen, but I think under the current provisions, and I'm sure that they will be grandfathered in, that we will have the bond measure on the ballot in progress prior to any legislation taking place. That's really the point.
See, that's the whole, that's the whole deal about what I was trying to get together, because we only have until February the 14th to put it and give it to the county elections administrator.
Right, understand.
You saying about rushing into something, I wish we didn't have the time constraint on us either, but that's just what we have. I wish we had another month to go ahead and do it. But because of the time constraints that are put on us by the legislature, that's what we have to do. That's all, the only thing that I'm saying is that I agree with you. I'd rather have the election in November.
We should.
What I'm saying is, I don't want to take the risk of some legislation being passed. A lot of times, they make it retroactive. That's happened a lot in a lot of bills. I'll tell you something, it, we could take a chance, and if this bond election failed this past November, of us not being able to have a bond election for a jail in November. That is it. And Jim, I wish you could, well, that's just it. Nobody can be able to tell, nobody can really.
Well, right, exactly. None of us have that crystal ball.
That is a possibility.
But I think that the risk is.
And that would be, if that would happen, that would be devastating to Hood County, that we'd have to wait five years before we could get a jail like this is, another 160 beds, or repairing the old bail, or doing whatever. We would be stuck with doing what we're doing right now, with the sheriff not knowing where he's going to put the inmates. And one of the things on the items here, I'm glad you're here today, is that E-Rath County's going up from $65 to $100. This year, it's going to be more than $1,500,000, because all the jails that we're housing our inmates, it's all going up to a minimum of $100 a day. That's what concerns me, is the fact that it, not doing something can be so devastating.
Well, and I understand all of that. Notwithstanding all of that, I don't think that we can predict the future in regards to the legislation. I think that we do have that window, that we can move this back to November, and I think that the citizens will actually be very favorably disposed, my view. But anyway, I appreciate what you all are doing.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
I do too. I just want to go on record by saying, if it comes up, you know where I stand on the record. If we had have done something, we'd be a lot better off, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come up here and state your name loud and proud, so we can know how you pronounce your last name one more time.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Richard Haves, and Judge, you can call me anything you like. I will answer with respect, because I have a hard name to remember and a hard name to pronounce. Thank you, Commissioner, for continuing to look into a solution for our jail. I think it's indisputable that we need a larger jail today. As our county continues to grow, we're going to need a larger jail in the future. That's just a fact of life. But I think 30 years ago, the county commission had a, had a decision about a jail, and they opted to build the jail we have today, and I bet at that time, their people said it was too expensive, too large, and unneeded, because that's what you will always hear when you look at infrastructure. Because you're looking at not just today's needs, but the needs down 10, 20, 30 years down the road, and trying to provide that capacity. And it's a daunting task, and I feel for you. Certainly, this is a challenge on the timeframe. When I look, think about this, I have to think about risks, and it's various risks. And one thing that came to mind is, if we put this on the ballot in May, and it passes, construction can start very early 2026. It takes two years to build it. The jail capacity would open in early 2028, three years from now. If we wait till November, you just shift everything six months, and it's 42 months from now when the new jail capacity opens. So in any regard, we're going to live with the current situation for at least three years, maybe three and a half years. So to me, that says, gee, it might be better to not put it on the May ballot, because there are people in our county who don't like bonds on May ballots. I'm one of them, because not enough people come out and vote on them. But if it's urgent, I understand the need. Judge, you read my form, it said I'm against it. And when I came in here, I was going to say against, but I was unaware of this pending legislation. And quite honestly, the legislature's done some things that I think are inappropriate in recent years. I phrase it, that instead of using a scalpel, they use a battle axe. And they do things like the ETJ changes and pending zoning changes are really going to take away local control. And the legislature has a thrust right now of reducing local control, for whatever reason, and I think they're doing it poorly. But I don't control the state legislature, and neither do you. So there's a risk, albeit small, but a risk with a large impact. You know, I wish, I wish lots of things. I wish we had another month, because not so much to make the decision, I think the decision's fairly obvious, but it needs to be socialized throughout the community. We need to get the voters to understand the need. We need to get the voters to understand, this is not a palace, this is a necessary piece of the infrastructure for the county. And you, as elected officials, are very constrained on what you can say once you put this on the ballot. So if we put it on the ballot, it's going to fall on citizens to make the case. Citizens like myself, like Tom, like our Republican Chair, Greg Harold, can say things and can influence it. So I think we're going to have to work together, because of the risk of the state legislature, and because frankly, I think they're anti-local control these days. I'm going to say, Judge, please change what I wrote on the form to four. I think in this case, the risk of the state legislature doing something that would hurt us is large enough, we need to take action today, even though I would much rather wait. But that risk, I think, is too large. Thank you for your time. And again, Judge, my name is pronounced Haves. Thank you much.
Next speaker is Tina Brown.
Good morning. I know you've said that we can't predict the future, but I think we can predict that the county will still be putting people in jail at larger numbers. Last year, I ran all the numbers that I got from open records, and last year, our cost was more than double the year before. Right now, we're on, on line to pay one point eight million. And that just includes what we're paying now. I mean, if the costs go up at all these other jails, this is going to go up even more. And like the first speaker spoke, I did also get that we spent almost over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in transport fees. So last year, it was almost two million dollars. How much did you budget? One point six? We're in trouble already. I can't imagine what this is going to do if we don't get this done as soon as possible because of the risk involved. Kevin pointed out at the, at the workshop that if something catastrophic happens to the plumbing, we're going to be sending two hundred inmates every single day somewhere. We need to get this started just as soon as possible. I think we have plenty of time with the people in this room to put out factual information to the public, if they will. They didn't last time. And that last bill, I mean, that last bond, failed by a thousand voters. That's it. We need to put this on the bond, and we need to get started on it. We, on the ballot, we need to get started on it. We have talked about it for, I mean, how long? Since you've been on this? I mean, I mean, really and truly, we have been beating this to death. It's, we don't need, we, we just need to come together. We can put it on the ballot, we can have a, a committee meeting here, and we can, we can put out factual information to the public, and we can get this, this done. When was the last time the county built a road? What was the last road the county built? Thank you. That was twenty-five years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. We're, we're not in the business of building roads here. We need to take care of our, our sheriff's department, our jails, and, and we just need to get this done. I, I don't see why, and the same people who are in here talking about, and, and were at the meeting, they're still going to say no in November? That's all they do, is say no. Thank you.
Good morning. I work with Stephanie Cooper on the elections as a vice chair of Hood County Republican Party. I work with her, and I just spoke with her at nine o'clock this morning. But first, what I wanted to mention is that Nanette and Mr. Eagle, Commissioner Samuelson, Commissioner Eagle, said they got this on Friday, and they just got one option. So I don't think it would be the same bond coming up that, and if that did come up, is about, about the, if we had it where we couldn't have a bond in two years, it would be a totally different bond, first of all. And, and like Ms. Samuelson said, she said, would it be retroactive? Well, we don't know. And per Mr. Eagle, it would be two years, probably not five. However, after we had an EC meeting last night, we had our Leslie Thomas there, who's our representative, and she said, nothing is happening down there fast. She said, they don't even have committees forum down there this time. But the bigger risk is failing in May, because we just had it on the ballot. And that really ticks people off, because it activates them. They go, hey, we just said no. And it's going to activate them again. But I think if we had time to get the information out to the people in November, and they have, they see the options, and they see that you're not coming right back with another fifty million because you got told, that you're, you're actually looking at alternatives, that they would look at it differently. Now, as of nine o'clock this morning, I spoke with the elections office, and they said, at this time, there is nothing else that would be on the ballot in May, that this would be a full county election for one item at this time, nobody else has filed. And that is roughly thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars to run that election just for one item, for a full county election in May. So basically, all I'm saying is, I think that November is the best option to put it out there where everybody has more time to look at it, and possibility of even another option, although this was a good option that I did see on Friday. That's all.
Not according to our.
Not according to the new rules, I'm sorry.
According to the new rules, according to the new rules, the old rule, she was not supposed to be able to speak, because she turned in her paperwork after this item was called.
True.
It doesn't matter. Finally, that, that, at the workshop, you let people find out.
What's happening here?
I didn't, I didn't really see that. You're right about that.
Let, let her speak. Come on.
Go ahead. Come on.
You're, you're already speaking, so just continue.
Come on up and speak. Just keep coming.
The other people.
You're all right.
They need to sign up.
I just didn't see it, okay? I'm sorry.
I know, I know. So there is one other speaker who would like to speak. But he was told no.
Who?
Right. He would like to speak. He got here late. He would like to speak, but the sheriff told him no.
Okay, well, that's, that's the new rules that.
But he, he told her no, too. But then she complained to him, and he fought it up here, and she turned it in. This is, this is wrong, a podcast. I mean, either, either follow all the rules, or don't follow any of them.
Like I said, had, had, I, you know, I'm doing more than.
You have the option to let anybody think that you want. It's in that, too. Don't you call anybody out there and speak.
Mr. Sabonis was still describing, presenting his head down the aisle when that form was starting. Which is probably a question.
Okay, so is that true that she, he was speaking when, with Tina Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess, under the fairness doctrine, I guess, who was the other speaker?
Yarborough.
Okay, I think fairness is going to have to say that we're going to let him speak. Come on up, Mr. Yarborough.
I'll, I'll fill out a sheet afterwards.
You've got to fill out a form, Judge.
I'll, yeah, no, we'll fill out. I have no problem filling out a form. I was trying to, but he said.
Go ahead. Go ahead, and then fill out a form.
All right. So I share the same views as everybody else. I'd like to see this in November, but we need this now. Like you said, there's no guarantee with legislation. We don't know what they're going to do. So we need to put this now. This is a need. Mr. Sabonis told us about how we need to keep our debt up. What bothers me is that after the meeting on Friday, we had Greg Harold, Kevin Andrews, and Judge Buffkin in here, all saying, hey, let's make sure this fails, and then let's get together and, and make sure we can try to pass it in November. I was, I got it recorded, sir. I got it recorded.
I would like to hear that, because I did not say, let's make sure this fails.
Yes, y'all did. Y'all said, let's do everything we can.
No, no, absolutely not.
So anyway, so they said that, and then they said, let's, let's do everything we can to, to make it happen in November. Well, why not do it now? We, we have the time, we can educate these guys, except for, again, it's the, these few that like to miss, send out misinformation out there, which keeps these things from failing, or keeps them from passing, and keeps them failing. So you, you, you all said, you, you have to agree with this, you all said, we'll do everything we can to make it pass in November.
Yep.
Why not now? Why can we not work together and make it happen now? And then you said, you guarantee, when we're out in the hallway, you shook my hand and said, I guarantee this will pass, and if it doesn't, I will not run for reelection. How can you guarantee that? Why not do the work now, when we know we need it now? I'm sorry, but I hate calling you out. I used to think highly of you, but now you keep, you're a puppet, and it's sad. So I, if we can work together in November, we can work together now, we can get the information out there, and if we can keep certain people from spreading misinformation, this bond's going to pass. This is something we need now. So thank you.
You want to say something?
Absolutely, I would like to say something. That is straight up, absolutely one hundred percent untrue. I said that, in my opinion, if we push forward with this thing in May, we face a whole lot of negativity on this thing. If we sit down and, and explore these options, I have repeatedly stated up here, the, the wise counsel of the many, to get the voices out there, to get the naysayers, bring them in, and say, what, what objection do you have to this? What do you say needs to be changed? Where do we need to look at? Right now, we're putting a console in the bathroom in dispatch. We've, there's no component of that on this, on this measure. They converted a bathroom into a station in dispatch. Do we need to look at something to potentially alleviate that situation in dispatch? I would dare say, yeah, we do. I got on the phone with Mayor Jared, and, and, and we were talking, and I said, do you remember when the three seventy-seven, when TechDoc came up here with the three seventy-seven layout, and they had all these stations, and they put these plans out there, and they invited public comment, and, and you moved from station to station looking at these things? And everybody, that was a great thing. How about we do this with a jail bond? How about we lay this information out there? The city has offered the, the convention center for, for such a thing. They're willing to work with us in any way that they can. Let's get this thing out there, get the feedback from people, and do everything we can to make this pass. We've had four bond elections in a row fail. I don't, I don't like, I don't like the situation that we're in there, but I'll tell you this, if this bond failed in May, I don't know when it would ever pass, because it gets into the same thing. We need to get everybody's voices together on this thing and pull in the same direction. And I absolutely, yeah, I guarantee it, for what that means, that this thing, we'll get together and get this thing passed in November. The need is great. The need is there. I believe that the math is there. I do not believe that the political will is there right now. And we've got a massive uphill battle to fight this thing in May. If we get everybody's voices heard, and in November, get this on the ballot, I think it passes in landslide. The need is there, and nobody wants San Francisco, California, and Hood County, Texas. We need to keep the bad people off the street, but let's do it in the right way. Let's get together and, and row in the same direction.
Can I ask, who's next? Me? Can I be next? Oh. So one thing that we've heard.
Who's talking? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Well, I was wanting to add, I had about a minute and a half left, I wanted to add something real quick, if that's okay.
Under the rules, Tom, when you stop, you stop.
Yeah, I'm done. Okay.
You're done.
No problem. Thank you.
You could have a here.
Okay. So here, I'm not trying to, I just want to point out some facts. About five years ago, it's been about five years, this board up here, this commissioner's court, and some on it, were pushing around for a one hundred to a hundred and twenty million dollar bond, five years ago, four, five years ago, because we needed a whole new jail, we needed to doze the old jail, we needed law enforcement offices with all the bells and whistles. And it didn't go over very well. And we kept discussing it, and it would kind of die down for a while, the discussion. And in the meantime, Commissioner Andrews and I spent a lot of time going over to the old jail to go, okay, is this old jail falling apart? Because that's what we were told. That was the narrative that was being told, that, you know, it's just, it's going to fall, it's just going to fall down into China any time. Just everything's going to fall apart. Well, you know what? We had a structural engineer come in and found out that it's structurally in good shape. We got some plumbing issues. I spoke with our maintenance person just the other day, within, just Monday, actually, yesterday. And he's, he is of the opinion that the mains are in good shape, sewer, and that we do have, we do have some issues, but not bringing a dozer in to doze that place down. So we got the wisdom of this court away and off of all new, doze the old, and put your cornerstone in there with your name on it. All that went on to, now we got a fifty, now we won't have this. If you'll just do fifty million now, just give us fifty, how's that? And at that point in time, my position was, let the voters decide. If they want to spend fifty million dollars on a, a toned-down version, where we also renovate the old jail, now they've at least agreed with us the old jail can be, is renovatable, then let's put a fifty million dollar bond on the ballot. And I'm, I'm going, I can live with that. We did not speak against the bond or for it. We, it was very quiet, and we let the voters, it was a presidential cycle, and we did not campaign one way or the other on that jail bond. This is fact. And on November the fifth, the voters came in there, I don't care if it was one more. In America, the majority wins an election. And that bond failed. So let's see here, a hundred and twenty million dollars, a hundred to a hundred and twenty million dollars, if we don't do something now, it's going to just keep going up. Fifty million dollars, bond issue, if we don't do something now, it's just going to keep coming up. Well, look what happened Friday. We walk in with twenty, now it's down to twenty million. I don't know about you, but a hundred and twenty million down to twenty million's going I mean, unless I can't believe my lying eyes. So now we've got a jail proposal on here that is based on needs. This is what we really need. However, we need roads, and we need EMS, because they're in dire straits. There's a lot of things that we need, that I think the voters need to have time to look at all the issues and all the, that are involved, and go, how do we want to spend our money without being taxed out of our houses? How do we want to spend our money? Because money is a finite deal for me. I've only got so much. And sure, I can go out and borrow money, and then be in debt for the rest of my life, which, you know, I'm on the downhill side of that deal. But the point I'm trying to make is that they've come down now to twenty million dollars. I think they can get this whole court in, in agreement with that over time, as, by November. I want to know that the people out here want that. And we're not going to figure that out today, because they're going to ask to vote on this today. Now, I don't think it's going to pass today. I don't think November, the November election, I don't think the November, the November election is going to put anything in jeopardy about putting it off to November, based on the way legislation always operates. They're not going to say it's retroactive. I don't believe that one. If you've got something in the, if you've got something in the works, they're going to let that move ahead, just like with, they did that with forced annexation. Everything that was going on when that bill passed, they went ahead and allowed them to grandfather that part of it. So one, another, I mean, I've got so many points, but there's many other factors that the people have to look at besides building us more space. Bookings are a rest. This is from the, by the way, this is from the National Association of Counties. This is a study from all over the United States about county jails. Well, what, what are all the components that comprise your Well, what, what are all the components that comprise your county jail population? It's not just how many people you arrest, it's how, how long do they stay in there? What are they being arrested for? Common drivers of jail population, there's four, according to the National Association of Counties. Bookings or arrests, of course, especially for low-level charges such as misdemeanors. Pre-trial length of stay, how long are they having to stay in there? Technical violations of community supervision, how many people are in there because they didn't show up for their probation officer on time or whatever, and they're in there for a technical violation? And then recidivism. And the point I'm trying to make is, we don't have all those numbers in front of us. We do have something from the, and by the way, there's 67 inmates, 67 inmates in that jail, right as of February 5th, that's the last time I looked at the jail report, 67 inmates that have been there for one year or more. But why have they been in there for a year or more? I mean, you, I can understand a few, but 67 is a third of the jail. Why are they in there so long? They should be down in Huntsville, their cases need to be, they need to do something with them. Why are they, why do we have some inmates in there for two years? The county jail was never designed to have inmates in there for one, two, three years. The max of a misdemeanor is one year in jail. Now, the misdemeanor cases, I will tell you, they flow through there fine. It's these felony cases that are the issue, and I know that the district court has ramped it up, and they're doing a good job, but there's more factors than just building you some more floor space. And I believe also that now that we're down to 161 more beds and to add on to the north side, that you've got something here that with time and with research and talking to the constituents out here, you could probably get this entire commissioners' court to agree with it. And that's what I think.
Sabonis, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
I was gonna...
Three things. What is that, again, I'm representing your bond council's comments, they made on conversations we've had on the phone. I'm going to have a right member to clarify that, so it's documented. But the second, the last thing I would say is that, in our discussions, and I'd ask you to think through your memory when you were on the phone, when you talked about new legislation, I don't believe he was saying that the proposed legislation for effective ability to have a November election. What I think he was saying was that, if you have a May election, and God forbid that it fails, it would be under the current statute, or if you have a November election, whatever statutes and places that, so I want to clear that. It wasn't about doing May because we prevented from having a November. I think that the legislature, if they were to fail, they would be under the legislature's new, new law at that time, which would be the new law and prohibition in November. That's, I want to clarify.
Okay. Thank you. So, I wanted to, yes, I wanted to first, you know, thank you, Mr. Sabonis, I know you were put under a little bit of time crunch to get this information to us, and we don't have anybody here, I don't think, from DRG, but I wanted to also thank them for coming up with another alternative, which is, I think, would be a better solution than, as Mr., as Commissioner Eagle said back when I was sitting out there, talking about $100 and $100 to $100 million, and that just made me kind of reflect back on, on kind of what happened during, between this timeframe, and you may or may not remember, but I'll just throw it back out there, that in 2021, this county received about $15 million in ARPA funds. Now, if we would have had this proposal of a $20 million jail, then we could have funded three-quarters of it with ARPA funds. Many other counties did do that. They funded partial expansion of their jail facilities, their LEC facilities with ARPA funds, and that just, as Commissioner Eagle was speaking, it just reminded me of that, that fact. So, I do want to address, you know, when you think about risk, there's two things that you think about with risk. You have, if you do a risk assessment, you have risk and probability. So you need to understand what the probability is to really know if that's a risk that will really happen, or if that's a low-probability risk. We have not had the opportunity to talk about that, the risk of the things that Mr. Sabonis has brought up, and it sounds like that's changed a little bit now in the last few minutes. So, and the other thing is, you know, as someone brought up, we haven't built a road in 25 years, which is exactly why we went through the process this past year of going through the workshop and adopting a master thoroughfare map. And we do need to provide better, I mean, I know, I hear it all the time, and I'm sure you guys do too, about the problem with getting around in this county, and how that's going to be impacted with the influx of more residents, and also with the changes that are proposed to happen, and I think will eventually happen on the 377 expansion. So, we do need to build roads. So, and I, I think that that whole process of going through the workshops and adopting the master thoroughfare map, we had community input, we had great engagement with the court, and I think that went really well. I want to thank Clint Head and our TNP folks for doing that. But, back to the jail. As I mentioned on Friday, we owe it to the taxpayers to provide them with information to make an informed decision. When you ask for money, you need to ask, you need to provide a business case. What are the assumptions? What are the risks? What's the probability? What are the alternatives? What is the long-term cost versus one option versus the other? Tell them the why, not just the what. If we want this to be successful, we need to spend time and communicate to the public. There's never been a good analysis done to tell the voters the cost of construction and operations so that they can make an informed decision. Included in that is the ongoing cost and risks of the current situation, you have to say. If we do nothing, here's the long-term risks, here's the long-term cost. If we do this, here's the cost and the risk. We have to provide that to, to the, in my opinion, we have to provide that so that the taxpayers can make an informed decision. So, as you all know, and it's been mentioned here, once an election is called, we're pretty much silenced as far as what we can say. We can provide facts. Last summer, there was, you know, there was no effort really to put together this information. I think we owe it to the taxpayers. I think this is a much better solution than we've had in the past. So, I certainly don't like rushing into putting something on, on a bond election with one week's notice. So, if we, if it fails, my other concern is, if we rush into this without providing the, the public the information that they need, and it fails again, then what? So, that, I think that's it.
Okay. Now then. Two weeks ago, I started looking at the numbers of what we're paying for out-of-county, looking at it in detail. Last fiscal year, $1.5 million, not counting transport officers, which was $466,000. The, you know, I'm scratching my head, trying to figure out, what can we do? How can we make, where we don't have to continue to pay, you know, other counties to house our inmates? So I come up with the idea, let's just build just the new portion, no refurb, on the existing facility. I got in touch with the architects, I said, give me numbers just to build the new facility. And we even scaled that back some. What he came back with, which was presented last Friday morning, and all of us got it at the same time, the sheriff and I got it at 10 minutes till 8:00, everyone else on court got it at 8 o'clock, 8:30, at the latest, was to build 161 beds with an option of an additional, up to 32 beds, new facility, and the only remodeling, if you call it that, would be in the kitchen area, just to be able to enhance the additional population. And they came in with a number of $20,456,000, I believe it is, and that's the reason the bond is, you know, proposed at 21 million. And that 21 million will only build 161 beds with a possible option of upping to the additional 32, or even just 16 of that, because the way the structure, they've laid out the structure, it will allow that. Now, we've got from now till May to educate the populace, and that can be done, or it can be blocked by those that want to block it. It is imperative that we move now, the jail was built in 1995, we, the county, started looking at adding on to it in 2005, and then 2009, then 2019, and then again last year. Yeah, we're a far cry from 100 million that was on the bond, or 50 million that was on the bond last November, excuse me. But all we're doing is adding more beds, which is what we need. And if you, if the citizens are comfortable with paying 2 million of your tax dollars to go to other counties, so be it. But this is downright ridiculous. And with that, I make a motion to call for the bond election in the amount of 21 million for the building of a new jail facility consisting of 161 beds with the possible option of additional, if the money's, based on how the bids come in, and that is, you know, straight from the architect. We could add the additional 16 or 32, you know, additional beds, if, you know, based on what the bids come in, if it passes, if it was to pass in May, they would start letting contracts by November. And we're looking at 20 to 24-month build time, fab time. And then we've got, so, in the meantime, we're going to be still paying, you know, 2 million or more per year for out-of-county housing. And the contracts that we have with the other counties, part of the verbiage in there is, if they call the sheriff and have him, tell him they've got to come get all our people out of their jail, he has eight hours to make that happen. And we've got contracts right now with six counties, and only three of them are taking our prisoners. Two of the other three that are not taking our prisoners are sending, sending their people out to other counties also. That's how bad the situation is. This is a statewide situation, it's not local, folks. Carrick County has 5,000 beds, and they're sending them out. So again, my motion is to call for a bond election from May the 3rd, 2025, in the amount of 21,000, I mean, $21 million for the building of a new jail facility consisting of 161 new beds. The debt service tax rate per 100 of taxable sets valuation, it will remain at .025484. That's the data. Thank you.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson for a bond election on May the 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $21 million for a new jail facility, consisting of 161 beds with an option of 32 beds with no increase, the bond with no increase in the tax rate. Do I hear a second? I second it. Is there any discussion?
Just two points, since they were made by Commissioner Wilson, that I always have to throw in, because he always brings this up. The cost to keep these inmates in the county right now, if they stayed here and not were not sent out, at 55 a day, at $86 a day, by the way, it costs us $86 a day to keep them here. If you do the math, it's 1.726 million that it, would cost us to keep them right here, number one. So you need to look at the delta as far as what it's actually costing the taxpayers, between what it, well, what is, what we spent to send them out, and what it would have cost us to keep them right here. You can't just look at one side of the spreadsheet. If you do that, you're only looking at about less than $300,000 difference, number one. Number two, now, they keep harping on that your debt service will remain, or your tax rate will remain the same on that debt. Probably true. However, your taxes are going to go up. Why? If we put another 161 beds on the floor, we've got to hire four to five jailers, times three shifts, to cover all that new floor space. So we're going to have four, 16, no, three shifts. We're going to have 15, 12 to 15 new salaries with benefits that are going to get added to the sheriff's department's budget. The money's got to come from somewhere to pay them, and where it comes from is you. So, the bond standing on its own, yeah, it's not going to change the debt service, it may stay the same for that particular debt service, but everything, it doesn't factor in all the other monies that's going to come, that's going to go along with it, that we're going to have to pay, and the tax rate's going to go up. So, putting another 161 beds in there is, is going to change your taxes.
I just wanted to ask a question. Are you through, Commissioner Eagle?
Yeah, I'm ready to vote when you are.
So, normally, I say normally, I've just done this twice, once here and once at the hospital district, but when we, a body calls for a election, there's usually a legal document that we get from our bond counsel that shows exactly what's going to be on the ballot. We do not have that.
We do.
Well, it's not been shared. So, I know you were reading off, but we normally have some discussion with our bond counsel and know exactly what the wording is going to be placed on the ballot before we take a vote. So that's a concern that I have. Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Commissioner Eagle said about the 1.6, that's not, which is why we need to do the analysis, because one of the things that may offset that is the transport officers. If we're not sending, if we're not, if we don't need transport officers driving back and forth, that salary could be over to the new jails. So it's not, you know, that analysis needs to be done. I know that this makes some people very frustrated, but mostly the gentlemen sitting next to me when I talk about putting business cases together, but this is how you analyze capital projects. So, and that's it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 Measure fails three to two. Okay. I bring you to item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action to enter into an interlocal cooperation... Discuss and take appropriate action to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with E wrath County to provide the housing and care of certain county inmates. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, this is from E wrath County, and everything basically the same as it was last year, except for they're going up to $100 an inmate per day. So I just ask that you pass this, so we can keep moving forward with E wrath County.
All right. Anybody hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve entering into the interlocal agreement with E wrath County to provide the housing and care of certain Hood County inmates.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the, or enter into the interlocal cooperation agreement with E wrath County, providing housing care for the Hood County inmates in amount of $100 per day. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item number three, thank you Sheriff. Discuss and take appropriate action for consideration to waive the 2025 payment in lieu of taxes for the Granbury Housing Authority. This is something that we do every year. This is a taxing entity, just would go from one hand to the other, so I make the motion that we waive the 2025 payment in lieu of taxes for the Granbury Housing Authority. Second. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
I think that was Eagle.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Four, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the second amendment, Tyler Technologies, to discontinue the executive and attendance software. This amendment will return a credit of $60,639.50 to Hood County. With this amendment, the total credits identified and received from Tyler since April of '24 will total $115,332.50.
Thank you, Judge.
And we can use that to house them.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. This has been a, an effort that, thank you to our treasurer and our auditor and our IT department. We have been working with Tyler since we discontinued the time and attendance software to return the funds that were, hardware and software that were paid for, a software that wasn't able to work for us. So just to put it in perspective, $115,000 is about the equivalent of three clerks' salaries for a year. So I really appreciate the effort that our treasurer and our auditor and our IT department worked with me, I know, and our county attorney. Thank you, Matt, back there in the corner. We had many ongoing meetings, and it was quite a negotiation, but I think we got a fair settlement, so I'm happy to bring this to the court today.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion.
Want to say something?
I do want to say how much I appreciate you helping me, and you fought really, really hard, and it did not go unnoticed. You, Stephanie, Matt, Drew, even Owen, Josh, and Tom, I mean, you guys are great, and my staff, of course, you guys were great, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Motion.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the county judge to sign the second amendment from the Tyler Technologies to discontinue the executive time, time and attendance software.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the county judge to sign the second amendment from Tyler Technologies to discontinue the executive time and attendance software. Second by?
I'll second.
Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, receive update for IT and AVI project manager on the status of the ELC AV equipment refresh. Mr. Orne Orket.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Michael Kastas, who is our account manager, unfortunately emailed me at about 8:20 this morning, letting me know that he would not be able to make it, so unfortunately, you guys are just kind of stuck with me for right now. As of yesterday, we do have an install date. It is set for March 10th, the week of March 10th, with commissioning, which is, you know, going through firing everything up, making sure everything works and all that, to be completed no later than the 18th. So two, would be two days, you know, in the following week. So Margaret has already got the room booked. We've already got it all set, so at this point, we're just waiting for time to do its thing and make its way to March.
I appreciate Mr. Michael Kastas. I spent some time with him on the phone the other day, and he, one of the things that he did to help pull this in was change the way the project was going to be manned, instead of having it outsourced to another third party. The AVI staff, his own staff, is going to be here doing it, so he was able to pull that in, and I appreciate that, because we're ready to get this done.
Okay. Well, good, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number six. Discuss and take appropriate action for additional funding to repair or replace failing HVAC units in county buildings. Mr. Leland Lawrence, our facilities director here.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. If you look at the spreadsheet here, we're about due to refresh our emergency money for HVAC failures. The last time this was approved was July 25th of '23, so it's been about two years now since we've had the refresh head account. You see in the past, historically, it hardly lasts a couple months with that amount. So our spending on HVAC has drastically slowed down.
Okay. I know that we, you recently had to replace the HVAC in the auditor's office, correct?
Yes, yes, that one was replaced last Friday morning.
Okay.
That's up and running, and they're happy.
Okay. So what's the dollar amount you want?
I would like to just stick with the trend, do 75, and hopefully, it'll take me three years to come back and ask for that again.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, we get another two years out of it?
Yep.
Okay.
Knock on wood.
Good. You're doing a great job. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we take $75,000 to put into your, from Fund 55, right?
It's just held there. It's allocating.
Okay, it's allocated, so that we provide the additional funding of 75,000 for repair and replacement of HVAC equipment.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allocate the additional $75,000 for HVAC units, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't help it. About four years ago, when I first got on the court, we, the only one up here was the judge at the time, there was a push by a couple of different Honeywell, a couple of other companies, to come in here and replace every air conditioning unit in this county for some, several million dollars, and new controllers, and other bells and whistles, because we needed it. And it did go before the court, and thankfully, we didn't do that, because it was decided, and our maintenance person at the time had decided, you know, with HVAC units, we're better off waiting till, you know, going along with them, because some of them will last 10 years, some of them will last 30 years. And so we chose to do that, and give the, a, allow, or an allotment for maintenance to replace them as they go. That was four years ago. You just heard Leland say that we haven't even had to use this money for two years. He's only asking for another 75, and it sounds to me like kicking that can down the road proved to be a pretty good idea. So anyway, I'm sorry, I had to say that.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion and second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You're doing a good job, Leland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action, allow the court to sign a proclamation pertaining to a community wildfire protection plan. Margaret Campbell. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Commissioners. This proclamation is going to go in support of our community wildfire protection plan that we are getting ready to finalize on behalf of the county. Texas Forest Service has been pushing a lot of counties to look at the wildfire threat across the state of Texas. Eighty-six percent of wildfires that occur in Texas are within two miles of a community or a neighborhood. And so what this plan does is it allows us to look at the threat across the county and develop mitigation strategies to protect the community. And this proclamation will go inside the plan to show the state and the Forest Service that the Commissioners Court is supportive of our plan.
It's a good idea. Good. Do I hear a motion? I move that we approve, allow the court to sign a proclamation pertaining to the community wildfire protection plan, the proclamation as stated. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the court to sign a proclamation pertaining to a community wildfire protection plan, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just wanted to throw this in, Judge. We are coming up on the third anniversary of the big L fire that happened on March the 20th, and that was, that was a huge, that had a huge impact on Hood County, so we must never forget that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon, beginning Friday, April the 25th, 2025, through Wednesday, April the 30th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. each day. This is something we do every year, so I make that motion that we allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon. Second. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Last item. Consider and take appropriate action to remain with Anco Insurance as Hood County's insurance agent for the 2025-2026 benefit year. Ms. Melissa Welber.
Yes, good morning. Really what this is, I'm not, we're not talking about our current plan with Curative. I just want to know if the court wants me to continue with Anco Insurance as our agent to represent us when it's time to start putting out proposals for insurance for the 25-26 year.
They've done a good job for us in the past.
I have no complaints for this past year. I think they've done a good job, and they've been very helpful to us, but if the court does not want to move in that direction, then Glenn and I need to know, because we need to get busy.
Well, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we remain with Anco Insurance as Hood County's insurance agent for the 2025-26 benefit.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to remain with Anco Insurance as Hood County's insurance agent for the 2025-2026 benefit year, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welber. Okay, consent agenda. Does any commission wish to discuss or pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion? I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda as stated, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously to approve the consent agenda. No road ops development? Mr. Clint Head, what's a public hearing for all the six things?
March 25th, 2025.
Okay. A motion being, ah, you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing to discuss and consider the following replats. The hearing to be on March 25th, 2025. The Landings Lot 3270R in Precinct 2. The Landings East Lot 3905R in Precinct 2. Landings East Lot 3937R in Precinct 2. Landings East Lot 3983-R, Precinct 2. Rancho Brazos Lots 20R and 22R, Block 2, Precinct 3, and Canyon Creek 5, Unit 9, Lot 20R, Precinct 2.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to set the six plats for public hearing on March 25th, 2025, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Discuss and consider the final plat of Sterling Edition Lots 1 through 5, Block 1. Yes, sir.
This final plat is the subdividing of the 10.006 acres out of the William Hunter survey abstract number 226. It'll be creating five, two-acre lots. The proposed plat lies in the Road corridor district in Precinct 1, and will be served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. Our comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval of the plat as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat of Sterling Edition Lots 1 through 5, Block 1.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of the Sterling Edition Lots 1 through 5, Block 1, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay. Financial. The auditor, Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
Good morning. We have quite a large payment this period. We have our final payment of the Justice Center, our tax note payment, and then Tyler, which we were holding until the negotiation went through. So this court, we have $5,27,115.99. I reviewed my office, and I have reviewed all of these invoices and recommend the court accepts them in pace.
Okay. Any questions, any discussions for Ms. Matlock?
Yeah, just a comment. Looking at the payments over 10,000, I guess we bumped this last time, but there's a payment on there, Webster Bank, $3,122,110, and that's the interest and principal for the tax note, number two.
Correct.
And then the third payment, there's three payments altogether, so we have one payment left, and that'll be due one year from now, approximately?
Next fiscal.
I'm sorry?
Correct. Next fiscal.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, so we've got one more, $3 million payment due on the tax note for fire equipment.
And the other debt payment is the final payment on the Justice Center, which is $845,000, which was a 2% bond, and that, if we had have paid that early, 12 to 15 months ago, we would have, without, we would have taken money out of reserve to pay that, which instead, as you mentioned last time, we were able to invest that money for this 15 months and receive about 5% interest. So that turned out to be a good deal. So, thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills at $5,27,115.99 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to pay the bills in the amount of $5 million plus, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? Just to make sure everybody, the citizens of Hood County are aware that part of that bill paying is a check to Somerville County of $28,200 for housing their inmates, our inmates over there last month. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Matlock. And with that, we are adjourned.